We need somebody who can whistle perhaps. Thank you. Who was that? Thank you. You should come to these each time. Welcome, everybody, to this evening's student recognition. We have a few groups of students who will be recognized by the school board for their state-level accomplishments. These students have represented the district well at bowling alleys, in swimming lanes, and on the district's stage. So as the students' names are called, we invite you to come forward, and you will be acknowledged by the school board with a certificate, and a coveted bear pin. That's the only place you can get this pin. So it's a very special, very special bear pin. And also, many handshakes, so you'll walk through and shake hands. We will invite all students back then for a group photo, as each activity is recognized, so please stick around after you've gone through the line with the board members. And with that bit of housekeeping finished, I welcome to the podium White Bear Lake Area High School North Campus Principal, Dr. Allison Gillespie, to kick off tonight's recognition. Welcome, Dr. Gillespie.
Hi, I'm Allison Gillespie. It's an honor to be here and honor our amazing students. So I'm going to start with our bowling team members. Tonight, we have one member of the boys varsity bowling team here to be honored for his honor as an all-state bowler. He also received notice as the top bowler in the conference and was named to the Conference Varsity All-Honors Team. This is Cooper Tate.
Cooper was out in Vegas bowling for the USA National Team.
Congrats, yeah? We also have congratulations to the following students who represented the district at the Junior Varsity State Bowling Competition: Connor Barton, Madeline Eastum, Victoria Eastum, Anthony Hoda-Kainen, John Rowley, Lauren Schmidt, Deanne Valento, record keeper, secretary, and all-around facilitator. No, she's not here. Coach Kevin Gilbertson, and Coach Andrew Schmidt. If we could have the parents and family members of these students that have been honored stand, please, to be recognized. And then we'll have the group of students come over and get a picture.
Okay, so if we can scrunch in a little bit tighter here, that'd be awesome. And then if you just want to make sure that I can see everyone's faces and you can see me. Perfect, okay. I'm gonna take a few here. One, two, three, cheese. And then if parents want to take pictures, I'll move out of the way.
Congratulations. All right, next, we have our girls swim team member. Congratulations to the following girls swim team member who broke the school record that had stood since 1994 in the Hundred Butterfly. This athlete competed in the state meet in both the 50 freestyle and Hundred Butterfly, qualifying top 16 in both events and making it to the B final. She finished 16th in the Hundred Butterfly and 12th in the 50 free. Melina Hughes. Coach Jake Mueller, and Coach Natalie Strauss. Next is our Fall Musical. Oh, sorry, thank you. All right, can we acknowledge Melina's parents? Would you stand, please? Congratulations. Next, we have those from our Fall Musical. Congratulations to the following students and adult advisors who were involved with this year's award-winning Fall Musical Footloose. Once again, theater goers packed in the sold-out shows, and our Fall Musical team earned a spot to perform on the state theater stage during the Spotlight Showcase in June. This year's production received many awards in the Hennepin Theater's Trust Spotlight Awards Program, including the overarching Achievement of Musical Theater Honorable Mention, Overall Production Honorable Mention, Overall Performance Outstanding, and other outstanding and honorable mention awards for ensemble, orchestra, costume, and technical teams. Many individual awards will be mentioned as participants approach to receive their certificates. Because this group is very large, I ask that you hold your applause till the end. We will start with our cast members. Anna Barton, Trinity Bialik, Meredith Bower-Master, Phoenix Bradley, Will Dearie, Joey Dennis, Ally Eichler, Honorable Mention for a performance in a supporting role, Crystal Green, Maya Harris, Olivia Horvath, Claudia Johnson, Kylie Kendall, Brian Kral, Sam Larson, Alina Lee, Anna Learned, Ashiana Lee, Isaac Letourneau, Shilo Lo, Grace Myla, excuse me. Emmy, oh, I'm sorry, Shilo, I missed one. Honorable Mention for a performance in a leading role. Grace Myla, Emmy Marier, received an evaluator shout-out. Jana Miller, Ninchai Nakchaklana, Cameron Pierce, Outstanding Performance in a Leading Role. Joshua Powell, Honorable Mention for a performance in a Supporting Role. Brenna Ryland, Jordan Rodriguez, Sidney Seko, Chloe Schweiger, Ian Schepler, Noel Summers, Gillian Staub, Per Swenson, Outstanding Performance in a Supporting Role. Maren Veeker, received an evaluator shout-out. Amelia Wenzel, Alexis Williams, and Megan Young. Next, we'll move to our crew members. Harley Basco, Bethany Bogenholm, Honorable Mention in Technical Leadership, Mackenzie Brown, Molly Brusoff, Polly Covert, Peyton DeVorek, Alyssa Erickson, Carly Evgin, Jordan Feit, Jesse Flamino, Lea Gebke, Lucy Gunnelson, Vincent Hacker Jarvey, Nikki Hamm, Joey Haddon, Ali Hong, Kenzie Jensen, Mackenzie Castner, Daniel Kowalski, Madeline Lemmers, Peyton Lee, Lexi Like, Rebecca LaRue, Aiden Lyons, Katie McGlattery, Helen Nelson, Julie Olson, Emma Parento, Tom Perira, Mac Pope, Aleah Ranker, Sammy Records, Amber Redmond, Ellen Ring, Megan Simpson, Maxwell Soika, Claire Terry, Sage Tao, Lily Vanderwood, Paula Vasquez, Sam Widener, Zoe Weltonitz, Outstanding in Technical Leadership, Fiona Wiltsey, Landon Witt, and Nathaniel Wolf. We also have Pitt Orchestra members to honor: Josie Balata, Zach Beauclair, Christian Channard, Katie Miller, Tejas Navardi, Bree Olinger, Ryan Peterson, Matthew Springer, Raymond White, and Hannah Yonker. Including their adult advisors: Katie Altough, Assistant Pitt Orchestra Director, Kalen Schlingen, sorry if I didn't get that, Choreographer, Scott Coleman Keane, Pitt Orchestra Director, Connie Hamilton, Rehearsal Accompanist, Jeff Willey, Tech Director, Corinne Stephens, Video Director, and Director Wendy Suya. So if we first could give all of our students a big round of applause. If we could have the family members of the students, please stand for recognition. And students, if we could have you come back for your group photo.
Okay, so if you just can make sure that you can see me, then I can see you. Okay, I'm gonna take a few here, you ready? All right. Oh, we're so close, okay, okay. All right, and I'm gonna take one here. Okay, and I'm gonna take a few here. Perfect. And then if parents want to get a picture, I'll move out of the way.
All right, that concludes our student recognition ceremony. If you haven't already done so, please grab a cookie. The regular board meeting starts at 7 o'clock, you're obviously welcome to stay. Again, thank you for coming out this evening, and congratulations, students.
Independent School District 624. We need to seat re-elected and new-elected board members. Dr. Casper, check.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rowley. I will go to the podium and then invite the newly-elected and re-elected board members to join me.
Turn inward.
All right, it's my honor to administer the oath of office to our re-elected and newly-elected school board members. Our newly-elected members, Deb Beloit and Jessica Ellison, and our re-elected board members, Kim Chapman and Don Mullin. So raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District Number 624, to the best of my judgment and ability.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District Number 624, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Right, congratulations. You are seated.
Congratulations. With that, roll call.
Beloit.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Allison.
Here.
Fahy, here.
Mullin.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Do y'all please join me in the salute to the flag?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, we are a nation, undeboweled and invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Ms. Newmaster.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion passes. With that, it's our yearly meeting, so we'll do a reorganization of the school board. With that, I'd like to open up the meeting for nominations for Chair. Are there any nominations? Mr. Chapman?
I move to nominate my colleague and friend, Mr. Don Mullin, for Chair.
I have been nominated for Chair of the school board. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? With that, nominations are closed. So, do we need to?
No, acclamation.
My acclamation of?
You just, because there's no other nominations, you just declare yourself Chair.
I declare myself Chair. With that, I'd like to open up nominations for Vice Chair of the school board. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chair, I move to nominate Tim Chapman as our Vice Chair.
Mr. Chapman has been nominated. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Congratulations, Mr. Chapman, Vice Chair of the school board.
Thank you.
With that, nominations for Clerk of the school board? Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Ellen Fahy as Clerk for our school board.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Congratulations, Ms. Fahy, Clerk of the school board. With that, we'll open up nominations for Treasurer of the school board. Mr. Chapman?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Scott Wilson for Treasurer of the school board.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Congratulations, Mr. Wilson. You're now the Treasurer of the school board. With that, the reorganization is complete. We have before us a consent agenda. In this consent agenda is items that typically become before the school board, but one of the things that we are very, very thankful to have is a large... Bear with me 30 seconds, I apologize. We are thankful to have the large donations to the district, and this month is no exception. So there are several, several donations. With that, we need a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Newmaster. This will require a roll call vote.
Beloit.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
Fahy.
Aye.
Mullin.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
The motion passes. This is the section in the meeting that we're open for public forum, how it typically works. If someone would like to speak, there's some white cards over on the table. I do not see any white cards up here at this time. If someone would like to speak to the school board, please come forward. Okay. Oh, thank you very much. We will go into, our first item is C1, Overview of Welcome to White Bear Week, and Update on Registration Information for 2018-2019. Dr. Casper, check.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to welcome Marissa Vetti, our Director of Communications and Community Relations, to discuss the information item presented here. Welcome.
Sure, thank you, Chair, and members of the school board for having us here and just taking a couple of quick minutes to get an update on the things that are happening in the school this January. Of course, all of our weeks and months of school are busy and there are exciting things happening. January is especially exciting for us because it's the time when we are welcoming new families into the district as kindergarten families, and then we're welcoming families to transition into middle school and then into high school, North and South Campus as well. And so throughout the month of January, we have wonderful things happening. This week happens to be tours for the elementary schools, daytime and evening tours for families. We had middle school registration nights and information nights happening last week. We also have high school coming up as well, and then our preschool registration is happening. And so some of the fun things that we've added this year, of course, our registration guides are happening in that. Some of the things we're especially proud of this year have been really working to welcome all of our families. We've worked with our cultural liaisons, made our information available for our incoming kindergarten families in Spanish and in Hmong, made some of the transition to kindergarten information available for all families as well. And we really have great things happening. And so, so as you all have questions about what's happening, a lot of information is available on the website as well, but then for families, we really want families to know that January is a time to come in, experience the schools, and absolutely to, you know, stop into any of our schools at any time as well. January happens to be the time on our calendar, but we are certainly open, the doors are open, for tours and for information at any time as well. And so are there any questions at all?
Thank you, Ms. Vetti. Are there any questions for Vetti? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Casper, check. Superintendent's report?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mullin, members of the board. So before this evening's meeting, I recognize students for state-level accomplishments in junior varsity bowling, girls' swimming, and the Fall Musical. Congratulations, students, and thank you for representing the district so well. January 22nd through the 26th is Pair Professional Recognition Week. Thank you to our staff members who serve in roles such as instructional assistants, pupil support assistants, special education pair professionals, lunchroom and playground assistants, and hall monitors, media center assistants, and family liaisons. Many of our board members, including our newest board members, will be attending the Minnesota School Board Association's Annual Leadership Conference later this week. In addition, Mr. Wald and Ms. Paul will also be attending. We look forward to learning alongside you at the sessions with a focus on student achievement, passion, perseverance, and possibility. It is important to remember to dress warmly on these cold winter days. The White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation, through The Closet, has an ample supply of jackets, mittens, hats, and scarves. Should you know any families who could benefit from the generosity of our community, please contact TheCloset at... I'll spell this email out so our viewing audience could make note of this. It's at C-L-O-S-E-T-W-B-L-A-E-F at gmail dot com. Members of our foundation and other volunteers will then contact the family and make confidential arrangements to help those who do not already have warm clothes. With that, welcome Ashley Rinstedt for student report.
Thank you, Dr. Casper, check. The White Bear Lake Area High School Drum Line will have the opportunity to play on the Super Bowl Live stage on January 26th as well as February 3rd. Earlier this year, someone nominated them for this position, and they were later invited to audition. Eventually, they landed their spot in the lineup. The event at Nicolet Mall, where they will be performing, is free for the public and will include food and activities along with entertainment provided by our very own drum line. For their North Ambassador Service Project, five sophomores at North Campus were able to raise over $1,000 to donate to Solid Ground Transitional Housing right here in our community. They raised this money by begging groceries at Cub Foods and accepting donations for their project. They then used this money to buy practical items, as well as toys, at both Target and Toys R Us, and bring them for residents of Solid Ground. This is a perfect example of the great work our students are doing in our community. This past Friday, the students and staff at South Campus dressed up in order to show their support for the victims of sex trafficking. Over 130 people signed their name on a cut-up tie or dress and posted on the wall to help raise awareness. The proceeds of this event will go to the Dress Member Organization, which works for the rescue and restoration of enslaved people across the world. Juniors Sydney Sheeran and Calla Frank, players for our girls varsity hockey team, are currently in Russia playing for Team USA and the U-18 Women's World Championship. Of the 23 skaters in this team, Sydney and Calla are the only two to be from the same city. This past Friday, the team won their opening game against Sweden 2 to 1, and topped Russia yesterday with a 5 to 3 win. Next, they are set to play Canada on Tuesday. Both of these girls are on track to be playing in the Olympics in just a few years. Way to represent White Bear and go Team USA. The week before break, the South Campus ambassadors spent some time creating bags of helpful items to hand out to the homeless. They included things such as hats, mittens, snacks, hand warmers, etc. During winter break, our students handed these bags out, and they were very graciously received. Just another example of the positive impact our students are making. Go Bears!
Thank you both very much. Our first discussion item is the first reading, and the way that the policy typically works is we, the district has a policy committee that will go through the policies, and then they will bring any updates to the school board, and we have two readings in typical consecutive months. So the first reading is to answer any questions. So this month, for the first reading of school board policies, Policy 405, Veterans' Preference, and Policy 610, Field Trips. Are there any questions regarding those two policies? Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chair, I did have one question, and this relates to Section 2, the general statement of policy. Paragraph B, it's highlighted in yellow, and this is concerning dismissal of a veteran employee. Says incompetency or misconduct, that is unchanged. What is proposed to be changed, shown after a hearing? Oh, okay. I misread it. I thought they were going to dismiss him without a hearing. But it reads incompetency or misconduct shown after a hearing upon deminus. Data charges and, and writing, so yeah.
Are there any other?
Mr. Mullen, if anyone has a cellphone near the mic, can we, that might be what's interfering with the, with the sound system. Everybody apparently did, so, thank you. We'll see if that corrects the, the feedback. So, thank you.
Better?
We'll see.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Fahey?
I just had a question about Policy 610, the student field trips. And what I'm referring to is the first attachment. It's student field trips procedures. So it's after page four of the policy. In the, referring to overnight volunteers, there's a statement in there that says all overnight volunteers must have a background check, at least, you know, hopefully 30 days prior. My understanding was that every volunteer, even if it's not an overnight trip, needs to have a background check. Is that correct?
Welcome, Mr. Cooper.
Yes, everybody who, who either volunteer or work for White Bear is required to have a background check.
Okay. Could that be confusing in the procedure that, because when I read it, I thought, okay, someone may get the impression that this only applies to volunteers that need, are going on an overnight one?
Correct.
So should it say just all volunteers for field trips must have a background check?
It should, because that is the, that is the truth, that they will need a, a background check. All, all volunteers.
Okay, so.
We can clarify, yeah, we can.
I just wanted clarification on that, because I remember as, you know, even if we were doing a, a one-day field trip, we had to make sure that all our parent volunteers had background checks. And I just, that may be confusing, that people think that only if you go on an overnight trip, you may need one.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And it's not just volunteers for a field trip?
Correct. But this pertains particularly to field trips.
Right, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
As far as this policy is concerned.
All volunteers must have.
We'll make that, we'll fix it, and it'd be.
We'll make that modification.
Be in the modification for next month's. Okay. Any other questions regarding the two policies? Ms. Newmaster.
Question, when it comes to the background check, and I guess I'm thinking of my own experience as a classroom teacher, and how sometimes it's difficult to get enough parent volunteers to go on an event. 30 days prior to a field trip, all of your volunteers have to be listed and turned in to the HR department? Is that the policy?
I think it's a general policy. I think that, I don't, there are some cases where it's within 30 days that we would get a background check done.
But it's your department that would be doing that?
HR would be doing them, yes. Well, there, there are some, within the individual programs, they have the ability to submit for volunteer background check. But we'd be the one reviewing those background checks to make sure that they meet the criteria, that there's no disqualified event that would recruit them from being able to go on, on the trip, or volunteer.
Newmaster. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
With that, we'll go into our first operational item, E1, which is the approval of the operating procedures. We have before us a recommendation for, to approve the rules of order and board agenda format for 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Wilson, the motion by Mr. Wilson is, Ms. Fahey is.
I'll second.
Scott's the second. The rules of order are in front of you. They're in the board packet, and the board agenda procedure is, is before you. Are there any questions, comments regarding those two? We can, we don't need a roll call for this, correct?
No.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Next item is E2, which is board compensation. The recommendation is to, that the school board act on compensation rates for 2018 as follows. To continue the same compensation levels in place from 2005 through 2017, or act on an increased compensation level as follows for 2018. The chair would be 54-50, the vice chair 52-50, the clerk would be 54-50, the treasurer 52-50, and members would be 50-5, 50-50. Is there a motion for one of those two options?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the increased pay rates.
Option B, which would be the increase, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahey. Before we, before we open up to questions, Dr. Kazmercheck, can you tell me about where, how you, how the district came upon these rates?
Yes, so to clarify, we've had the same board member compensation since 2005, and so we're going on 13 years at the same rate. And we get a, we get a compilation of board compensation, and that's included in the board packet. Those, those districts listed are members of Northeast Metro 916. And in fact, the Northeast Metro 916 Board is included in the averages. So these, the, the amounts presented here represent an amount that is just slightly below the average of these, of these districts. And so it's a reasonable increase that's being presented that brings us about the midpoint of comparable districts.
All right. Are there any other questions?
May I make one more point of clarification?
Of course.
It's probably, probably something that every two or three years we would, we would take. Well, actually, we act on them annually, but just in order to keep that position in the, in the mid-range, we would probably revisit this more frequently than we have in the past. So as a, as a point going forward, you can expect that, that would be our target. So we'd be consistent with that.
Dr. Kazmercheck, can you tell me about where we are, rate us as far as the size of our district compared to the other districts that you named off?
There's a wide range of districts. We are, we're in, we're in the upper quartile in terms of size of, of these districts. Even still, if we, if we consider all of these, we're near the bottom in, in terms of board compensation. So there are handful of districts that are larger. South Washington County is larger, Stillwater's larger, Mountain View is larger, North St. Paul's larger. But beyond that, we're, we're in that, we're in that next tier, so.
Okay. Any, any other questions, Ms. Ellison? So if you have a question, just, oh, you, you can almost kick me, so, go ahead.
Don, I don't know how this works. I just, I just have a, a point of clarification. So, since this is my very first time on the board, I, I wonder about my own vote to raise my own pay when I haven't earned it yet. But also taking into consideration the many years that my fellow board members have spent on the board. So I don't even know if this is a question here. I just wanted to put it out there as a clarification that I understand the conflict that I would like to increase the pay for my fellow board members, but understand that that might look self-serving. And so, point.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I would just offer to Ms. Ellison that an abstinance vote is an option for you, if that makes you feel more comfortable.
Thank you.
And I, I realize, I feel, this is difficult, and that's why it hasn't been really addressed. It's usually been glossed over since 2005. But I, I think if it's been 13 years, i- it may be time to address it. Because I know, I feel like, no one wants to vote to raise their pay. But I look at, and thank you for including the comparison in the packet, because that certainly puts it into perspective. And I looked at the fact that it's, it's been 13 years. And it's usually something we like to just ignore and go, no, we won't do that. But I seconded the motion, so obviously that would be an indication that I'm in favor of it.
Any, Ms. Belloyd?
Yeah, I, I also wanted to just, I, I realize it's a pay raise, but if you're talking from 2005 to 2018, and we're talking about an increase of less than 500, that's not a real big jump, so I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
Any other questions, comments? This will require a roll call vote. Sorry?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just a final comment on that, and this is really for the public. Even with the approved raise, we're still below average when we look at our comparable districts. So, you know, we're not playing a catch-up game. We're certainly not in this for the money. We do view it as a public service, and we're glad to do that. But on your hand, 13 years is a long time to go, you know, un, unreminerated, you know, for our services.
This will require a roll call vote.
Belloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Nay.
Ellison?
Abstain.
Fahey?
Aye.
Mullen?
Nay.
Newmaster?
I don't know. I'm, I think I'm conflicted, but I guess I'll say aye. Appreciate the, the spread and the fact that it's small.
Wilson?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
The ayes have it. But, well, could you?
It's, well, there are four ayes, two nays, and one abstention.
The ayes have it, so the, well, the salary will be increased. Next item on the agenda is Item E3, which is action on the regular and work-study meeting session for 2018. There's a recommendation for the administration that recommends the school board approve the school board meeting dates for 2018 for, and January 2019 through June of 2019. Is there a motion? Ms. Newmaster, are you making the motion?
Well, I had a question, and is that the time to ask it, or?
I think we'll, should we do the questions after motions?
Yeah, let's get a motion in a second.
I have a couple of other things, too, that we will need to discuss as part of it.
There's a motion by Ms. Newmaster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Now it's time for discussion.
My only discussion is that in July, we do a double up with the work-study and the regular board meeting together the same day. And it, I noticed that last year in particular, and again this year, it is the Monday after the Fourth of July week. And I think that's a hard, hard week when people have extended things. I know personally, I'm doing an awful lot of international stuff with camps. But I just think it's a tough week, and I just wonder if that could be moved to something that's not directly following the holiday week for most people.
Dr. Kazmercheck.
So the, the second Monday in July is, is where we landed on that date, and that's been where we've, where we've been. What's different, what's different in, with what's being presented here with years past, or at least more, more recent years, is that there was a retreat during the day. So it would start anywhere from noon or 2 o'clock, and would run for several hours, then we'd take a break, and then we would go into a regular meeting that evening. So this is different, in that we would start a work-study meeting at 5:30, the regular time that we would, that we start work-study meetings. And, and we would limit that to an hour and a half meeting, and then roll into our regular meeting at 7:00. So that is a bit of a difference from previous years, and I know it was difficult for some of you to make it during the day for that July work-study meeting. And so we, the proposal here is that we would move it to the 5:30 start. So notwithstanding the date, if you're considering the July 9th not being the most ideal day for the, for the board, we could certainly consider moving that. But it is different from previous years. And I think we typically, the regular meeting in, in July, we typically had fairly good attendance, if I recall. It was the work-study meeting that we sometimes struggled to have, even a quorum.
I was thinking you could only have one meeting a day typically in July. Would it be possible not to have it the Monday following, the day Saturday? But if not?
Yeah, and I would, we can make a change. It's up to the board.
I'll tell you, for, for me, that day works really, I mean, I can definitely make the regular meeting, but the work-study meeting is going to be difficult for me to make also. If there's a possibility to either change it around or look for an alternative day, an alternate day, that would be better suited.
Would you like to do that right now? I mean, we would suggest, I guess the next, next suggestion would be the, the next Monday, the 16th.
Is that acceptable to everyone, or?
I've got a dozen internationals at my house.
Is there? I think if we could change it, that would probably work better for most.
Okay, so we'll modify the, the calendar to indicate that. I wanted to, may I? Is there anything else on that one? I have a couple of other things I want to bring up.
Okay.
In fact, some conversation about our, our board working with one of our attorneys, Mick Walzberger, who some of you have had, had the occasion to meet, new board members have not, to do a, a professional development session with the board sometime in February. And that date is not, is not listed here, but we would like to land on a date and then add that so that it becomes part of our regular meeting schedule. So the dates that work for Mr. Walzberger are, so if you have your calendar, now you might need to pull that cellphone out, and you might have the interference. These are the dates that would work for Mr. Walzberger. And again, our thinking is that we would begin at 5:30, and it would, we would shoot for a, a two-hour meeting or so, so 5:30 to 7:30. So February 8th, February 22nd, February 27th, or February 28th. So those are the dates that would work with, with Mr. Walzberger.
I'm sorry, what was the second date?
Yep, February 8th, 22nd, 27th, and 28th.
Is the 8th still our Strategic Action Team meetings?
It's a Thursday. It's the first Thursday.
I suggest the 22nd?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Chapman?
I was just going to say it would probably be good to stay away from the 27th. That was one of the dates. That's a Tuesday, PTO meetings.
Okay.
Meetings tend to be that night.
And there's, there's an MSBA training on that day, too, that goes to about 4:30 or something.
Okay. So the.
Winter orchestra concerts for the elementaries are on the 8th as well.
Okay.
27th.
So it sounds like the 22nd might be our favorite date? Okay. So then we'll modify this, this document to include February 22nd, 5:30. And I suppose we'll label it as a, either work-study meeting or, or just school board professional development session. We'll figure out how to word that. But it'll be February 22nd at 5:30, and we'll add that to this list. So with those two changes, the July 6th, July 9th meeting being moved to July 16th. Then I guess I have a question about July 8th, 2019. So then that would be same thing, move it to the corresponding day in the middle of the month. Okay. So July 15th, 2019.
Is the meeting with the lawyer an additional work-study, or are we just moving?
No, it'd be an additional meeting, yeah, devoted just to that.
With Dr. Cook or whatever.
Exactly, yep. And given that we have the opportunity to work it into the schedule. And given that we, uh, have the opportunity to work it into the schedule, we thought it would be, um, more efficient just to put it in, in this list. We'll modify it and then post it as a, just as these meetings are posted. So with those three changes, July 16th, 2018, July 15th, 2019, and then, um, February 22nd, 2018 at 5:30.
So with that, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we need to, oh, I'm sorry?
Um, I was just looking for some clarification on the September 10th, 24th, and 24th. One is listed as, September 10th is listed as regular, September 24th, 2018, regular slash special, and then September 24th, again, work-study.
Yep. Uh, so the September 10th is a regular meeting, just like every other, um, first meeting of the month. And then September 24th, because of the way, um, um, school districts have to approve the preliminary tax levy by the end of the month, and we don't have the, we don't have that information on, by September 10th, we don't have until later in the month. So we add a very brief, uh, regular meeting at the end of the month, right before our work-study meeting, so that we can act on the preliminary levy. The deadline for the preliminary levy is the end of September, and so we push it as late as we can in the month, because there are a lot of things that change during the course of the month of September with either our data change, we change data, or Department of Education changes data, so that we land on a preliminary levy that is pretty close to being what it will be by the end of the month. So that's, and that's what, what that is, that's why it looks, um, a little strange. We did move it to a 5:30 start, and I think in the past, we started at 5:15, so we moved that, um, that regular slash special meeting to 5:30, and that's where, that's a, it's a one-agenda item, or a one, uh, one-item agenda, and that's the, to approve the preliminary levy. I'm willing to answer, but does that, I hope that makes sense. That's how we do it, yep.
With that, we, is there any other questions? So we have a, uh, an amended calendar, um, and, um, this does not require a roll call vote. So all in favor of the amended calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. They have a calendar. Next, uh, on the agenda is item E5, an update for the official depository for the school district funds and authorized bank accounts and signatures. Uh, Mr. Walt?
Mr. Walt, I can, I can take this if you don't...
Dr. Kaszmerczek?
Yeah, this is a, uh, this is just a, um, um, regular action item that we take this month. We, we modify, um, we, we actually modified these, uh, signatures back in July, once, uh, once I, once I took over the superintendent role, and Mr. Walt took over in my previous role, and once we hired Mr. Wazork. And actually, Mr. Wazork, um, yeah, I think he was in place by the time we did this. But now we also must modify it based on the new, um, board member, the new officers on the board. And so where, um, where it says, for example, Board, Board Chair, obviously Clerk, Treasurer, will, will fill in those names. And so just to, I don't think we need to go through that, um, line by line, but just know that when you act on this, Board Chair Don Rowan, Board Clerk, um, Ellen Fahy, and Scott Wilson, Board Treasurer, those will be substituted where they've been left blank. Um, and again, this is a, this is an action item that you would see if there's ever any turnover on any, uh, any of these names that you see listed here. Um, our auditor, um, requires us to bring it to the board, um, at the subsequent board meeting to anybody no longer working for the district. So, um, don't be su- you know, don't be surprised if you see this in July, if there's some turnover and again in, in January. Um, it's a semi-regular thing that you'll see. So that's what this is. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So we have a recommendation to accept the, um, to accept the update for the official depositories. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Newmaster. Um, this will require a roll call vote.
It's always safer if you're not sure.
I'm not sure, so we're gonna go that direction.
Beloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy? Aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next is action item E5, which is the, uh, which is the official publication for school district for 2018. So in the past, there's a recommendation that school board approve the White Bear Press as the legal publication for the White Bear Lake area public school district. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fahy. Mr. Wilson, are you okay with the second?
Sure.
Okay, there's a, a motion and a second. Um, just to be safe, let's call a roll call vote for this.
Beloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy? Aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. And next is, uh, operational item E6, which is the appointment of a compliance officer. Uh, approve, there's a recommendation to approve the appointment of Mitch Cooper, Director of Human Resources, as the District Human Rights Officer, Sarah Paul as the Title IX Coordinator, Kathleen Daniels as Director of Student Support Services, as the District ADA slash 504 Coordinator, and conformance to the school board policy. Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. Newmaster, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Uh, does this, this...
No.
All in...
Just voice.
Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The eyes have it. Next is oper- uh, E7, action on local education agency authority. There's a recommendation to authorize Dr. Wayne Kaszmerczek as the Local Education Authority, L-E-A, representative for the purpose of reviewing and approving documents required for compliance to the federal program, including, uh, included in Elementary and Secondary Education Act, ESEA, for 2018. Dr. Kaszmerczek, would you like to speak on this?
Uh, no, again, an annual approval item, and the latest iteration of the, of this federal, um, laws, every student succeeds act, so that might be a more familiar term, and at least at this point, the original, um, was the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, so.
There a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fahy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. This is a, um, although, we don't... All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Uh, action E8, almost there. Action E8, action on, uh, little, uh, legal counsel. Um, there's a recommendation to approve Knutson, Flynn, and Dean, and Ratwick, I'm gonna chop this up, Rosek, and Maloney.
Mm-hmm.
Rep. Anderson, Squires, and Walzberg, PA, and others as needed for the 2018. The school board approves authorizing personnel to lead, uh, to contact legal counsel, including school board chair, superintendent, school assistant superintendent of teaching and learning, assistant superintendent of finance and operation, director of human resources, director of student support services, director of community services, and director of communications and community relations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. This would require a roll call vote.
Could we...
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Okay.
Under discussion. Mr. Chapman?
Um, I believe last year, we had one, uh, position also designated on the board besides the board chair, the vice chair, uh, as an authorized person to contact in the absence of the chair, if I remember right, did we not, uh, 'cause I believe we had that acted upon last year.
I believe you're correct.
So I was wondering if we should have that again, um, should you be out of town, or something needs to be going on that would need to be handled.
Dr. Kaszmerczek?
Just to...
Okay.
Yep, I'm just taking a note. We can certainly, we can certainly modify this. I don't, um, anyone handling that here with the board, but that would be a reasonable thing to do. Can, may I clarify, too, if it be appropriate now? Um, so that entire list that you read, there was three different firms, there wasn't all the names in one firm. So depending on an area of expertise by a law firm, so for example, Bond Attorney, Tom Dean's is of the bond attorney we used. Um, and so that, that's why you see a variety of different firms, it just depends on their area of expertise. And sometimes you, you can develop, um, an area of, um, just a working relationship on certain types of, um, issues that arise with, with a certain firm, and so we have, uh, we have flexibility with who we reach out to. These are, these are all three longstanding, um, relatively longstanding, uh, Rep. Anderson, Squires, and Walzberg is a relatively new firm, but those attorneys are, are long-term Minnesota, um, school attorneys. So that just gives a little more context to the list of, um, firms. So depending on an area of expertise, we might go to a certain firm for that expertise. So I will, um, however you want to modify that, the motion, Ellen, um, to include Vice Chair.
Who was the, the motion?
Wilson.
Wilson.
And Chapman.
Mr. Wilson, are you okay with the modification?
Yeah, I, uh, will move to accept the modified, uh, legal counsel for the district.
Mr. Chapman? Obviously, you're okay with the modification. So with the amended, uh, with amended recommendation, this will require a roll call vote.
Beloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy? Aye. Mullin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Motion passes. With that, we, uh, our last action item, uh, our operational item for the evening is Operational 9, it's the second reading of School Board Policy. Uh, School Board Policy's 406, uh, public and private personnel data, uh, School Board Policy 413, harassment and violence, School Board Policy 414, mandated reporting of child neglect and physical and sexual abuse, uh, Policy 415, mandated reporting of maltreatment and vulnerable adults, School Board Policy 424, um, license status, and Policy 515, protection and privacy of pupil rights, or pupil records, excuse me. With that, uh, we will do those in one swoop. This is the second reading, these have come before the board last month. Um, with that, we will, can we have a motion to accept those policies?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fahy, is there a second? Second by Ms. Newmaster, are there any questions regarding those policies? Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, this is, uh, I guess a question for the administration, administrators that were in the, uh, December meeting of the Policy Committee that I sat in on. Uh, Policy 413, and it's not a big deal, but it's more of a construction, uh, type of an issue with regard to this policy. Um, there's not a page number, but under, uh, three definitions, protected classifications, um, we have the various classifications that are protected, except for, um, it does refer to remedial response, which is not a protected class, it's, it's actually, uh, defines an action. And so, um, I know, uh, Ch- former Chair Newburg had brought this up at the December meeting, and it, uh, in the shuffle of everything, it looks like it probably didn't get addressed. And so I was just wondering, um, how we want to go about doing, doing that, taking care of that. Because it should, it's a definition that should be moved out of protected class, and a definition by itself, basically, separated out of protected class. It's more of a construction issue, again, it's not...
So it'd be similar to, well, we, we pull it out, and it becomes its own letter, correct, based on the structure here, is that what you're, that's what the suggestion was?
Right.
Um, so we can certainly make sure that that happens. So with that modification, you'd be acting on, um, on that policy with that, with that clerical change.
Me and, and Newmaster.
So with the modification, so we would need to...
So I think, um...
Reconfirm the motion?
I would, uh, yeah, I would suggest that, well, again, we can make the modification, we can make the modification, um, and post it according to what's been discussed here, and what was apparently discussed at the Policy Committee meeting.
We can make the, or can we pull it...
We can bring it back.
Or we can bring it...
Probably would like, yeah.
Or we can make the modification.
To, to, just for clarity, actually, why don't we do this? Why don't we pull the motion, or pull the policy out? Is there any reason that it needs to be, can we pull it out and then just readdress it next month?
Yep, we can absolutely do that.
That way, then everybody's got the right verbiage for it, and make sure that it goes correctly.
Sure.
So with that, Ms. Fahy, are you okay with pulling Policy 413?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson, with your second?
Newmaster was second.
Excuse me, Newmaster, I'm sorry, Ms. Newmaster. Are you okay with pulling Policy 413? So tonight, uh, we will, um, approve, or dis- or will vote on Policy 406, 414, 415, 424, and 515. Okay? All those in favor of those policies, signify by saying aye. Oops, excuse me, sorry.
I have another question, on the student directory...
Information.
Information?
Yep.
The present students and parents, there's, uh, it's a highlighted section on the disclosure of directory information, and it's limited to, it includes, um, the school district and PTAs and those types of things. What I'm wondering is, um, is, do the changes allow the schools to put together their own directories based off of the information that is given to the district?
Can you ask your question again for the PT, for the...
This is, can you tell, this is Policy 413 still?
This is...
406.
406?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you reference, um, a page, or a section?
Uh, it's page 150.
Of course, I don't have those.
Section, um, 7C.
7C.
And it's a highlighted section under D.
You confirm the policy number for me?
406?
No.
That's not the policy number?
Is it?
It's not directed.
Wrong one, whatever it is.
Screen.
515?
515, there we go.
It's for the student privacy.
Pupils' records, 515. Protection and privacy of pupil records, Policy 515.
7. Okay.
Well, my question is, it's, you have a, the section D on, um, directory information, then if you go into section...
So it's underneath section C, uh, 7, release of directory information, page 149, right? And then it's the next page, it's D.
Disclosure of directory information, yeah.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Could you, would you mind asking your question again?
Well, um, from, from what I understand from reading through this, it looks as if individual schools could put out their own directories for their students, for their parents, based off of what's contained in here. I, is that correct, or?
Yeah, the schools have the ability to create their own, uh, directories, as long as they, they are complying with what the guidelines are for those directories. They have the ability to create their own directories.
Okay.
We, is that okay?
All right.
Hold on, hold on.
As a point of clarification, that those directories...
As a point of clarification, that those directories have been created by the PTAs based on volunteered information in the past, but not by the school itself.
Correct.
So, yes, that's happening at the school level, but not by the school district, if that, if that clarification makes sense.
But the information can be obtained from the district information, based off of what this is saying, correct?
Only through volunteered information, asking people, are you, do you want your information?
Included.
Included.
Right.
And then they would list that information to be included. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking, just-
But can I get that from the school office? People-
If it's a directory, yes.
My question is based on, and I know a lot of the schools had put together the information on their own, like in an Excel file, going through and doing hundreds and hundreds of pages, and I know some of the schools were working on trying to streamline that, so that you could create, you know, a list of teachers, students by teacher, and students by last names, so that parents and PTAs could get a hold of-
And I can do some clarification, a lot of our parents do ask me similar questions. And so, so the answer is that the PTAs can be a separate entity at an, you know, open house night, or whatever it might be, and then parents could voluntary, voluntarily give their information that way. That's the way that, through policy and through the procedures that we have, that the families could share their information voluntarily with the PTA, who then turns around and turns it into a directory. It sounds like you're asking about something a little bit differently. The school can create a school list to use internally, not to give to a PTA, though. And so if a, if, if an organization came and asked for directory information from a school, then a, then a school would have to provide that. However, it's a little bit, a little bit confusing, because our directory data by policy includes the student's name, but not their email address, not their phone number, so that, so I think parents get a little bit confused and say, well, yeah, the directory information is available. It is, but it's not really the directory information that the parents are looking for. When parents say directory information, they mean, can I get a name, a phone number, and email address? They can't get that, because phone and email address are not directory data by policy. Does that make sense? So it does get very confusing, and it gets confusing for people to, to hear the explanation, then they say, well, what do you mean? You said we could have directory data. You can, but a directory data list would give you a name of students if a PTA or whoever would be requesting that public information would, would ask for the list. But if a PTA would say, could I get the names of the students, email addresses, and phone numbers of families, or address, this, that, and the other thing, then the answer would be no, because that information is not public, because it's not defined as directory data by the policy. Does that make sense? I know it gets confusing.
I know, we had that conversation with the PTO meeting I attend, and the directory information provided by the district is not useful when you're organizing kids, activities, groups of parent volunteers, they have to give that information. It's, it's another barrier to organizing, but it's legally described here.
And just another point of clarification, I, we recently had a request that was similar to this again, and I checked with, with our legal counsel, who said, you know, we're doing it the right way. If we open it up to one group, we would need to open it up to all groups, which I think this policy set by the board is, that would go contrary to what the policy is right now.
Any other questions regarding any of these policies that we've discussed? Thank you very much. With that, all those in favor of adopting the policies, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the policies are adopted. We have now reached the part in the meeting where we're open for board forum. This is for any school board members that wish to talk about anything, events coming up, things that are going on. Is there anything for board forum? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this really is for the benefit of the students that are in attendance at tonight's meeting. This is an atypical board meeting, in that we really didn't discuss too much school district business, per se. As you clearly saw, you know, if you followed it closely, it's all about reconstituting the board, reaffirming the district's operating procedures for the board, things of that sort. It's, you know, just construction. And then moving forward from that, then we'll get into far more typical meetings when we're, you know, deciding policies for, for the district, for students, and things of that sort. So that was different, and I, you know, hope you appreciated it for what it was. The second thing, I have full faith and confidence in our former Chair Newberg, that she's got her digital recorder set for tonight's meetings. So with that, I'll say aloha, Janet.
Anything else under board forum? I'd like to welcome our two new board members, and congratulate everyone, Kim, and congratulations, and thank you all for your support in this evening's meeting. I really appreciate it. Ms. Newmaster?
I just have one invitation, that as we go into cold January, with the days getting a little longer, we are also going to be inviting anyone who wishes to come to the annual Lunar New Year celebration that'll be held at North Campus, and it's almost a seven-county bunch of people that come, but it is a free performance of Korean traditional dance and drum, there's kids' activities, there is a lunch and a market, but the free stuff is there for activities and for the performance at 1:00 in the North Campus Theater. So everyone's invited, and depending on the weather, we get lots of people or not so many. So we hope to see you, and I will send something out to community, and I know, I'll send you a poster.
What's the date?
Did you send a date?
It is Saturday, the 27th.
January 27?
January?
January 27th. New Year is coming.
Anything else under board forum? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
And I'll second that, we are adjourned.